All right, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to all of you. Hope you had a great time. This will be our first meeting of the year, so we're gonna go right to it. Today is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. We'll now call the City Council regular meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Item number two, our roll call. We do have a quorum of council. Item number three is our pledge. It will be led by Marcus Snell, Assistant City Engineer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, our presentations and recognition. Item number four A, recognition of Allison. Allison, is she here? Recreation Specialist of Parks and Recreation for being awarded the 2023 Young Professional of the Year. We will have this presentation done by District C Councilmember and a former Parks Board Member, Anthony Marulis.
Hey, Allison, congratulations. So as a former Parks Board Member, as a parent of kids that enjoyed every amenity in this city, we thank the entire Parks Board, but tonight we especially recognize you. So tonight, we have a certificate of recognition for receiving the Young Professional of the Year Award from the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, or the TRAPS. So we thank you for your dedication, your vision, your commitment to our city, and on behalf of council, we present this reward. Would you like to say something? No?
Thank you.
Councilmember, can we get the Parks Director and the many of the staff here to get a picture?
You got one more, right?
No.
No? Okay, Allison, and then Donnie, and any Parks Board Members that want to celebrate. Do you guys want to come down also?
No, you can do it. I'm not dressed. Item number four B is also a recognition, but we're gonna go ahead and move that to the next agenda. Item number five are public comments. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Go ahead.
Bruce Zabrowski. Mr. Zabrowski, please state your name and address for the record, and please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Bruce Zabrowski, 7915 Chancal Drive, Houston, Texas. Way to go, Missouri City again, a 13% increase for the people in Fawn Meadow on property taxes. Other entities pretty much went to zero. But you people just spend money foolishly, continue to spend money foolishly. It's bizarre. Our police are spread thin. You strong-arm a person in Sienna to get some little police substation there. Is anybody sitting there? No. Put a person on the street. It's ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous. You have no clue what you're doing up there. I've had it. It's pitiful. If you want me to shut up, pay my Missouri City property taxes, because I was one block over, it would be zero. We get no city services from Missouri City. We have to maintain our own water and sewer while Quail Valley gets bond money for storm sewer, for golf course runoff. Quail Valley has a mud district, make their mud pay for storm sewers. Everyone else in Missouri City has to pay their own share. I'm tired of this nonsense of Missouri City. You're spending money foolishly, it's my money, and I won't shut up until it stops. Thank you.
Move one block over, Bruce, you'll be fine.
Yeah. And you're not supposed to respond back to me.
Out. Item number six are staff reports. City Manager Report provide us an overview of terms, items, and announcements of community interest for which to formal action will be discussed or taken.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is the start of City Managers Reports going forward. Tonight, I have two items I'd like to share. One is the fact that ETC has concluded the citizen survey, and I'd like to give a thanks to all the residents that completed the survey because of their response. We were able to meet the threshold that increases the reliability of the data. We will be presenting that information in the near future to each of you once we've gotten the report from the consultant. The next item is one, because I encourage continuous learning, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Norma West from Quartz. She just completed a year-long program that gives her the Certified Court Manager designation. So with that, I just wanted to highlight. And we will make sure to pass that on to her. She's not here, but we will make sure that she gets that information. So with that, we will continue these reports as needed in the future, and thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, our consent agenda. There's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Mayor Protim Klausser. We do have a person signed up to speak, not signed up, a councilmember, recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7A.
Okay. So that's the motion by Councilmember Boni?
I'm just asking that item 7A be pulled for discussion. Oh. And approve item 7B.
Okay, we do have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Emery. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for item 7B?
I thought I had included that. I included that in the motion.
So the motion was for item 7B only?
Okay. Is there a motion for 7A?
Well, we're discussing that one now.
Okay, let's see it, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I asked that this be pulled, you know, not, I just wanted to get a little bit of understanding, and there was a few things that stood out on this item that I wanted to kind of get clarity on. City Manager, I was looking at the, I'm assuming that these are approvals that are required signatures, and I see that there were five signatures on there for this contract, but where it said, where it says, let me see here, I'm trying to pull it up now. It was requiring if they concurred or did not concur. Two of them said concur, but the other three were blank. They didn't say concur or did not concur. They signed, but I did not know if they were saying that they concurred with the decision or did not concur with the decision. So I was hoping that maybe, you know, you could provide some information on the details of this. It's a three-year contract with two one-year, I mean, one-year extensions for two years. Five total.
I'm trying to get clarity on your question. Are you stating on the contract, there was actually a signature?
On the document, I'm looking at it here. I think Kelly O'Donnell was one, oh, here it is, let's see. Yes, thank you. Page three of 26. The signature and date, it shows, I don't know who all these people's names fully are. I kind of can tell Norma West is one, Kelly O'Donnell, and Daniel Stewart. But for Norma, Kelly, and Danielle, they didn't check concur or do not concur, whereas the first two did, and I just wanted to.
I will let Velma speak to that. Now I understand your question.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Velma Adams. I'm the Fleet and Facilities Manager. I believe what you're actually looking at is this validation of the score sheet, and they did all concur. I do see where it's not checked off, and that was just an error on our site.
So they did concur?
They did concur, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And could you give us a little bit more detail on this contract? I mean, has this firm, I know that they were the best low-cost bidder, I guess, but can you give us a little history on this firm? And have they done business with the city of Missouri City before?
Okay. Dextera is the contractor that we're suggesting for award. There were one of five that we did put out an RFP for it. We got five responses. We completed an evaluation on it. They were, part of the evaluation was pricing, 40% of a hundred, or total of 100, was put towards pricing. They did get the 40% or 40 points for that. They did have the lowest price, but that was not the only reason why they were suggested. Their experience and their background and the proposed plan was part of the evaluation as well. So the evaluation of all of those together is what gave us the awarded vendor. They, I'm sorry.
Have they done business with any other cities or our city before?
They have done business with cities. They're rather large. They have multiple contracts throughout the area. They are actually based out of Austin, but they have locations all throughout the United States. They've been in business for 75 years, and they answered all of our questions. We spoke to them several times to make sure that they were gonna be able to support our needs, and we were satisfied that they were able to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I spoke to, I emailed the City Manager about this. So the project manager that stated in the contract is, has been assigned, which is promising. Congratulations. And then there's also conversation in the contract about having a progress report and having checks and balances, and that's also built in the contract. So very nice. I just want to make that public, so everyone knows that there's a lot of good checks and balances in place, and there's somebody assigned to this agreement, so thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And just to let you know, the progress report is also customizable, so if we find a deficiency that we didn't notice before, we can add it on to confirm that we're validating and making sure that the quality is there for our needs.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yes, what are the different groups that the services be provided for? Does it include LGC, the golf course?
Yes, sir, it does. So they cover, they're gonna be providing services for to all of our city locations, including PDOnX. So you're looking at City Hall, the Community Center, Rec Center, all of our locations. So altogether, there's 19 locations serving all of our departments. They will provide daily services. There are some locations that have weekly services. They all have monthly services and annual and semi-annual services that they're gonna be providing. We also have the option to, they can provide additional services for them on our request, such as COVID fogging, if we get another outbreak, or if we, we do COVID fogging now, but we do it in-house. But if we need services or, you know, we need their help, they'll be able to provide those kind of services as well. And that's built into the contract.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Velma. Do we have a motion for this item? We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Velma. Item number eight are appointments, 8A.
Good evening, Mayor and members of.
Wait, hold on. I do have.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move item 10C before 8A. And the reason why is because there is a staff member from the city of Stafford that is here to speak on that item.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second. Can we go ahead and vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item 10C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Missouri City, Texas, and the city of Stafford, Texas, for the joint use of the city of Missouri City Animal Shelter.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation by Walter Gant, Director of Neighborhood Services. Yes, sir?
Yes, I need him to get the presentation up. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Tonight, what I'll have for you is a Missouri City Animal Services Stafford Interlocal Agreement. I wanted to give a brief history on this. The animal shelter has had a shared joint-use agreement since 1987. In 2011, Stafford paid an approximate amount of $100,000 towards the redesign and construction expenses of a new shelter. The 2018 amendment agreement has ended, and the Missouri City, we continue to work with Stafford. If you look at it, the five-year contract, again, has ended, and we restructured it for a new contract to continue so we can collaborate with Stafford on a short-term solution to take care of the animals at the shelter. This contract has also allowed for two part-time staff, and it also, this contract gives seven kennel spaces at the shelter, which is, you know, that's great. It's great to see that we're working together. It's also great to see that the movement there for the animals is also working out in regards to the transport. Needs met with the new contract. The agreement assists with the increasing cost of running the shelter, the monetary contributions for transport of the animals, adequate management of the staff, SOP compliance in regards to our intake and the way we run it operationally. It's a one-year contract with two renewals for a total of three years. So we're not stuck in this contract, and neither is Stafford. City of Stafford, you know, they benefit in regards to, they don't have to build a new shelter, they don't have to fund the positions that we have, and it's also now they're animal services officers. It'll be a lot more efficient for them in serving the needs of their community. I want to thank you all. If y'all have any questions, I'll answer them at this time.
Thank you. I signed up to ask a question, Walter. With this new agreement, what's the, is there a cost change? I mean, is there differences in the new cost? If so, what that is?
The amount for this is $117,852. Last year's cost annually was $29,352.
And with this, I know we just had our new opening that we had. Will there be plan to add more spaces into that? Colonel Spaces for Stafford, or they're keeping it to where they want it?
We're, at this time, keeping it to seven.
To seven? So from them, from, I say, when I say them, City of Stafford, has there been any new items that they brought through in order for this contract to Missouri City?
No new items.
No new items?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
So Walter, you said that they don't have to build a new shelter, but isn't this a kind of soft landing for them right now? So they are going to build a shelter one day, but we're just helping them through that, until they do that, correct? Angel?
I just think there's also the possibility of a regional shelter that the county is working toward. So to say whether or not they would need to build a new shelter is out of our purview, and we hope that the county will come up with a solution that's going to provide that regional service, and that's what we're working with the county to try to help make a reality.
Okay. And as far as the seven dedicated spots, how does that work with relationship to capacity? So if we're overcapacitated right from, say, Missouri City dogs, is it still the number seven for Stafford?
Well, we'll still have the, it's still seven, but if there's some overcrowding, we have quarantine areas also available. And I'll tell you this, we've been pretty efficient in making sure our transports are done regularly also. So we're not looking for any issues, but if they come in, we won't turn our animal away. We do still have areas available.
Yeah, because I think the way it read is that we had priority, and if there's room, then they get seven. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much. What is our total number of kennels that we have, grand total?
Total number of kennels, I believe it's 37, but I want to give you an approximate answer on that.
That's all right. That's pretty close.
Or 42, but I want to be sure on that.
Okay. And so the seven dedicated, which you just, that was one of my questions, so thank you for asking that. In terms of the funds, can you kind of elaborate a little bit more on that? Previously, you said that it's gonna be $117,000? Is that for one year or for?
For one, that's one year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Versus what they had paid in the past was what?
Yes, which was $29,352.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yes, I noticed in the presentation, this was shown as a short-term solution. Does the representative from Stafford, are they here? Could we maybe get some kind of a clarification from them?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott McElrath. I'm the Code Compliance Administrator for the City of Stafford, and I'm the team lead for Animal Control. Right now, I can't tell you whether or not we're fixing to build a shelter in Stafford. There is some conversation about the county going to a regional facility. As we all know, it's easier to push the rock as a group than it is to do it by yourself. Many hands make light work. It's very, very difficult in Animal Control right now in Fort Bend County for all agencies. If you call Fort Bend County, they're full, and they're full all the time. It's a problem, and it's a problem nationwide, and it's something that everybody's trying to wrap their head around and trying to find a solution. I can't give you an answer as far as are we gonna strike and build a shelter in the next three years. Just can't.
Okay.
Well, my other question is that, and I think we touched a little bit on it, the understanding that if Missouri City has run out of capacity for our dogs, there would, because this is a one-year agreement, that we would consider terminating that agreement or at the normal termination time so that we could accommodate Missouri City dogs. So we don't want to kick you out, but we want to make sure that
Understand.
that animal shelter is primarily for Missouri City dogs, and if we can, you know, assist Stafford in their process, you know, we want to be good neighbors and do that. But just so there's an understanding that, you know,
Understood, sir.
as you say, I'm not sure how long it's gonna be or when Fort Bend County's gonna come up with something.
Understood, sir.
So I think it's something that, and I like the terms of the contract as far as the length of that. So I just, and I'm sure, you know, you know that, you know, again, we want to be good neighbors, but we also want to take care of Missouri City dogs first.
Understood, sir.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you to both of you. I don't have anyone else on the queue. Looking for a motion? And a second? There's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number eight are appointments, 8A, consideration and possible action. We appoint members to the 2024 Charter Review Commission, presented by E. Joyce Yamo, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year to you all. There is no formal presentation for this item. As you all know, the charter requires the appointment of a Charter Review Commission in January of the year of the charter, proposed charter, a potential charter election. Back in October, I met with you all and provided the proposed process for the solicitation of members for this commission. The staff advertised utilizing newspapers, the city's website, social media, marquees, HOA lists, and other mechanisms from October until December. And the city has received five applicants, five applications from some very qualified individuals. Those five individuals are Jeremy Davis, he's an engineer and former city employee, Mark Ruble, who is an attorney and a former board member for the Sienna Municipal Utility District Number Two, Keaton Inamdar, who is the Deputy Director for the Fort Bend County Health and Human Services Department, and he's also a former city employee and has a background in budgeting and finance. Mark Kramer is a pharmacy consultant, and he has served on an HOA, a local HOA board. Peter Cruishank is a retiree, but has also served on an HOA board in the area. Mr. Cruishank has also attended the Police and Fire Academy as well as Citizens University. So these five applicants were invited to attend the meeting. I do believe that several of them are here and present. So with that, I leave it to you all. As mentioned, you have until the end of January to appoint a commission. Once that commission is appointed, they serve a six-month term.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yes, the cutoff for the applications was, what, the 15th?
It was December 15.
Of December?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And the reason I asked that is there was a commissioner from the prior City Charter Review Committee that had expressed some interest, but if we need five, and we've got five candidates that I'm assuming passed all of the criteria that we had established, so I will, unless there's some circumstance that requires that we have another candidate, please keep Joe Workman in consideration. He indicated, and he didn't, he obviously didn't apply on time, but when I talked to him, he said he'd be interested if needed. So I just want to put his name on the list in case we have a need for an additional commissioner. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that there's an item that we're gonna be discussing in closed executive session that I believe impacts this item. And with that, I would like to ask that we not make a decision on that until we actually discuss things in closed executive session. So not saying that we shouldn't take any action tonight, but I believe that we need to speak with our city attorney on this item.
Okay. Recognizing Mayor Protim Klausser.
Yes, I do have a question. Is Mr. Keaton Inamar here? Can you step up to the microphone, please? In looking at your application, I noticed that in the qualification statement, you did not agree to the terms of if appointed, you will meet or exceed the minimum attendance requirements for your board and understand that missing three cumulative meetings per city fiscal year is subject to removal at the direction of the governing board.
It's probably an error while I was typing, do it.
So is that an error? Did you mean to?
Yes, that was just error on my part.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. E. Joyce, in the event that someone misses some of the meetings, is there an opportunity for us to appoint? is there an opportunity for us to appoint an alternate in this, to have someone on standby just in case to make sure that we make form?
So the charter only provides for five members and not an alternate. But that is something, I know that we've been, you all have been doing that with some of the other boards and commissions. I think it's a great idea, but the charter only provides for five. But that is something that we can take to the Charter Review Commission to include in the charter moving forward because it's a great idea.
And because of there's, there's only five, I'm assuming we need at least three for quorum to make sure they can make proper decisions, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Generally, the way we proceed is that they don't make formal decisions until the very last meeting. Each meeting, they're presented with information on proposed charter amendments. And then at the very last meeting, they decide what they want to move forward to you all for consideration.
And my last question, will they also go through the ethics training?
All boards and, moving forward, all boards and commission members are required to complete that ethics training. So once appointed, they will receive the link to the training and be asked to complete the form. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Boni, do you have a motion? Is it postponed?
I'm, I was asking if we would consider a potential consideration and possible action after we have our closed executive session.
E. Joyce, do we, do you need a motion to move this item?
So you would like to, so what you could do is if you wanted to go into a closed executive session now, you could certainly make a motion to take up item twelve A at this point and then come back out and continue the agenda. Or if you would like to move this item, the further consideration of this item until after twelve A, you can also make that motion.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move item Eight A after twelve A.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall, which I don't see on the screen. Seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall. Okay. All right, no other, no one else signed to speak, so let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item nine, our Public Hearings and Related Actions, nine A. One, which is a public hearing, to receive comments for or against the proposed abandonment of a nine-point-five-two-three-square-foot drainage easement in the Arcadia subdivision. So we'll now call, open the public hearing for item nine A one. City Secretary, do we have requests to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, with no further comments, we will now go ahead and close the public hearing, nine A one and nine A two.
Nine A two is an ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, providing for the abandonment of an approximate zero-point-two-one-eight-six-acre tract easement, drainage easement in the City of Missouri City, providing for the abandonment thereof to Taylor Morrison of Texas Incorporated, a Texas corporation, providing for the terms and conditions of the abandonment, release and relinquishment, providing for the acceptance of a new drainage easement to the City of Missouri City, and providing other provisions relating to the subject.
Okay, thank you. We have a presentation by Marcus Snell, Assistant City Engineer. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So this is a very short presentation. If we look, I actually don't even have a presentation. If you look to item three in the publicly available, or page three of the publicly available packet, that shows the limits of the easement. It's a ninety-five-hundred-square-foot easement. Historically, it had been used for drainage to move across the Humble Pipeline into an existing pond. With the development of the Arcadia subdivision, all of that's now been moved into detention facilities in addition to underground conveyance. There's no longer a need for the city to own or operate this easement as we will not own or operate any of the detention facilities within the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. I signed up to speak on this item, so who will maintain this?
It is currently the, the easement itself will be abandoned. There'll be homes placed on top of it, but the ponds are through agreement to be maintained by mud, twenty-six, twenty-three? Twenty-six. And the, that's along with the other stormwater infrastructure.
Okay, all right. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Okay, thank you so much. Marcus, could you tell us how this came about? We start there.
The abandonment of the easement? So historically, that easement, we're on the southern side of the Humble Pipeline easement. It's on page three, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
There was a, an existing pond that easement allowed for conveyance of drainage from the north side of the pipeline to the south side where there was a detention pond or an existing fishing kind of muck pond. And with the development itself coming in, that, that particular alignment is not being used for stormwater conveyance anymore. That's now moved to underground stormwater facilities. And then that goes into the pond. The pond's actually been converted into a very nice detention facility. And that will be where the water collects until it moves down south into the Cartwright Area.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else on the queue, is there a motion? It's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number ten, our Resolutions, ten A.
Ten A is a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a grant application through the Texas Department of Transportation for overtime activities by law enforcement to reduce the incidence of traffic collisions, injuries and fatalities, agreeing to provide applicable matching funds and containing other provisions related to the subject.
All right, thank you. We have a, we have someone to speak on this item, Rachel Murray, Recognition and Compliance Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is for the STEP Grant, STEP Comprehensive Grant, which we have had since 2016. There is a twenty-point-seven-five match by the city, which comes from fringe benefits from officer overtime. The purpose of this grant is to reduce crashes throughout the city, and we are requesting application of it for fiscal year 2025.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
Member Marulis? The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number ten B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation for overtime activities by law enforcement to reduce the incidence of traffic collisions, injuries and fatalities involving commercial motor vehicles, agreeing to provide applicable matching funds and containing other provisions related thereto.
All right, thank you. Rachel?
It's still me. So this is the, this is just commercial motor vehicles. So the whole purpose of this is to stop just commercial motor vehicle, whereas STEP Comprehensive is for all other vehicles within the city. Again, it's just to reduce crashes within the city. And there's a twenty-point-six-one percent match on this by the city. Also comes from fringe benefits for officer overtime.
All right, I do have two people that signed up to ask questions or comments. Recognizing Mayor Protem Klausser.
Hi, Rachel.
Hi.
Which two high-traffic locations throughout the city? I know this mention, two high-traffic locations. So which, which two locations are these?
So we're allowed two square miles for each zone. TechDOT allocates us two zones within the city. For this one particularly, we have the district that goes from Ninety and Gessner, that whole basic loop between the Beltway Ninety and Gessner. It comes down Texas Parkway through Buffalo Run, through that district right there, because we have a lot of those businesses that have commercial motor vehicles that park over there. And then we have Highway Six and Sienna Parkway all the way through the Fort Bend Toll Road down by North Creekmont, so spans our city end to end from Sienna and then goes up to Vicksburg and the Fort Bend Toll Road for our Zone Two.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Emory.
On both of those two grant applications, is there a grant amount that's available to us?
So TechDOT has always capped the grant and told cities what they're allowed to apply for. This fiscal year for 2025, they have opened that up. Historically, we have been under our values of being able to spend the entire allotted amount, which is why this year I've kept the amount for 2025, have kept the amount the same as fiscal year 2024 to get a better idea of kind of where our numbers and our figures are going to be at.
How much is that grant?
So the commercial motor vehicle grant is, TechDOT's portion of it is eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty. And for the comprehensive grant, it's twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Are both, our portion is what, twenty-seven and a half percent? Is that what you said?
Twenty-point-six-one on commercial motor vehicle and twenty-point-seven-five on comprehensive.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Marulis. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item ten D.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending and restating the City of Missouri City Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA Grievance Procedure for City Services Programs and Activities, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and making certain findings relating thereto.
Our presentation by Jason Mangum, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have a formal presentation. Article two of the Americans with Disabilities Act outlines the standards and requirements for government and public agencies. This is one of the things that we are required to do by law. It provides a, a grievance procedure and names an individual as an ADA coordinator for the city.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion by Mayor Protem Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Item number eleven, our City Council Announcement. We'll go ahead and start this announcement with our Large Physician One, Councilmember Sonia Brown Marsh.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year to everyone. I just only had real small comments on today. I had an opportunity to attend the Snowdrop Ultra Race and Relay on Saturday. Kudos to me, I made it there six-twenty-seven a.m. And it was very cold, but very well attended and had an opportunity to do some research on, on that and why they, why they do it, the number fifty-five. It was pretty incredible to understand that there were two doctors that operated on one little girl right here at Texas Children's Hospital for twenty-seven hours. So the one hour counted for her. And it's amazing that they continue to raise money to this date and probably going forward for years to come in an effort to have research funds available for childhood cancer. So kudos to the Parks Department. Jason, it was awesome seeing you out there as well. And that we're able to host such a, an incredible event right here in our city. It's really good. And lastly, I had an opportunity to attend Sylvester Turner's farewell gathering on this past Saturday as well. And so that, that was a great deal as well. I have no further comments.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Large Physician Number Two and Mayor Protem Lynn Klausser.
Yes, I want to wish everybody a very Happy New Year. I join my colleagues at the Eleventh Annual Snowfest Parade. This is my first year attending, and I want to nod to Councilmember Marulis, who has always been the point person for that event and rallying the troops. And we, we, we stood together in solidarity for everybody who was running in the cold. And so just want to thank everybody for being there. They raised over seventy-five thousand dollars just that morning. So I'm pretty sure by the end of the race, they had raised more for pediatric cancer. I also attended the city's holiday employee luncheon and the bicentennial park improvement discussion alongside the Parks Department and volunteers from the Mayor's Youth Commission. I want to invite everybody out tomorrow in our community center as we send off our very own Missouri City Princess and Miss Texas, Ellie Bro, as she heads to compete in the Miss America Pageant. We'll be in the community center tomorrow from five to eight, so we encourage everyone to join us. And as we, as we are now in 2024, I want to encourage everyone to eat local, shop local and support local right here in Missouri City. I also want to encourage you to find a cause, a mission and organization to volunteer with. And on that note, I want to leave you with a quote by H. Brown Jackson Jr., who is the author of Life's Little Instruction Book. The happiest people are not those who are getting more, but those who are giving more. And that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. Recognizing, oops. Recognizing Councilmember District A, Monica Riley.
Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year again. Want to wish everybody a wonderful and prosperous New Year. Had an opportunity to attend the bicentennial park, Park in the Dark, as I like to call it, before the light showed up. So kudos to everyone that came out. We were able to scare a couple of neighbors out of their houses to come and have a discussion with us. And so it was very, very informative, just kind of hearing their perspective and things that they would like to see at that new park. Also had an opportunity to do food distribution where we gathered over four thousand tons of, four thousand pounds of food with the Hendo community. So thank you to Maduka, who was the spearhead to, of the Sewa-Dewali organization. So they were able to distribute all of this food over the holidays and to be a part of that, that was phenomenal. Also giving away toys with the DCC and the Dr. Robert Sante Foundation, being able to help a lot of kids in the community, that was really special, as well as the Mo City Santa giving away lots of toys on Christmas Day to kids who did not have anything. Me too, attended the Eleventh Annual Snowdrop Ultra Race. That was my very first time, and so it was truly, truly an honor to come out there and just see what people are doing to help children who they've never even met before. So it was a blessing to be out there with my colleagues. While we shivered and cold, we still had smiles on our faces. So thank you so much, Jason, and to all the Parks Department and the Public Works Department that was able to make that successful. I want to say congratulations to all of the Houston City Council and the new mayor, John Whitmire, had an opportunity to attend the swearing-in today and to see all those wonderful people to come into office as new elected officials and to celebrate the existing incumbents as well. So congratulations, Mayor Whitmire, as well as a personal friend of mine, pastor and councilmember Willie Davis. Want to conclude by saying happy birthday to my special Sine, who was watching, who turned nineteen on December thirtieth. So she was asleep while I was at the Snowdrop, but I made it back in time to, for us to celebrate her. So happy birthday, sweetheart. Mommy and daddy love you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing District C, Councilmember Jeffrey Alboni.
Oh, wow, I got to promote it.
Oh, District D, redistricted. B, B.
It's all good. Thank you so much, Mayor. I may not want that, okay. I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you enjoy, and Merry, I hope you had a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I enjoyed coming out to the city employee holiday lunch, seeing all the fun that everybody had and also where the city manager made the announcement that the bonuses was being distributed and I think the check coming up the next week or less than a week. So I hope you all enjoyed that, didn't spend it all in one place. But that was a blessing for us as a council to be able to do for the holidays. Attended a HGAC board meeting. You know, we have a lot going on, of course, after that lawsuit with a proposition passed in Houston. Now we have a board composition committee. We're looking at the makeup of HGAC, whether that's going to be different or not. And I serve on that, that subcommittee. Mayor Sylvester Turner also attended the African-American Elected Officials Breakfast with Councilwoman, Sonia Brown Marshall was also in attendance. It was his farewell breakfast and was very well attended and a lot of great people from Fort Bend County, particularly where in, in the house. I also attended the AIDS Healthcare Foundation's annual Houston Holiday Party. I was able to serve as a judge along with Mayor Protem Klausser on the fashion show. And they, they had a karaoke and all kind of stuff going on, but it was, it was very good cause and a lot of good stuff with their employees. Also attended the Missouri City Area Seventh Annual Quanza Celebration. Mayor Alakad, as well as City Manager Jones was in attended, in, in attendance. Great that they have this in Missouri City now, and we look forward to doing a lot more with them. I also attended the Snowdrop Foundation's Ultra Race and Relay. And it was exciting because I realized at that moment, prior to us actually speaking and sharing words, that this was actually the sixth year that it's been in Missouri City. that this was actually the sixth year that it's been in Missouri City. And that was the first thing that I did when I got on council. Councilmember Marulis invited me out to come and participate in this festivities. And it's a great cause for pediatric cancer, and we love that. Lastly, man, I just want to say how disappointed I am, City Manager, that you didn't bear the cold in the early morning with us like you did on last year. That was your first also intro into Missouri City. And so we, you were truly missed, and we look forward to seeing you at 5:30 next year. All right, that concludes my comments.
All right, recognizing District C, Councilmember Anthony Pearlitz.
I was a little disturbed by the public comments, but I'll let it slide because I know we're doing some great things here in Missouri City. One of the things will be a new facade improvement program video being released hopefully very soon. And you guys will get to see all the great work this council's doing and this staff is doing. So that's my comment on the public comment. I want to thank Anchor CM, Oliver's Gourmet, Johnny Tamales, and UPS. Every year, they step up to help out Fort Ben Family Promise, to help out kids who don't have gifts. So thank you. Snowdrop. So everyone talked about it, 11th Annual. We actually stole them from Sugarland, which I'm really proud of. But there were over 17 states that represented that race, that came to Missouri City, that slept here, ate here, shopped here, and had fun here, and left here with great memories. Over 145 laps. They started on Saturday, December 30, and finished on the, on the 1st of January. It's a long run, about 145 laps. So anyway, that's my comments. Happy New Year.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember of Districts D, Floyd Emery.
Well, again, Happy New Year to all of our citizens and staff and associates. It was a great time to bring in and listen to all the fireworks and the gunshots, but we made it through, so. The other item that I had was the, I attended the holiday staff luncheon. It was great to see all the staff together and the camaraderie that is displayed truly shows that we are a team and that together we are excelling. So that was, that was really great. And I attended the PD Service Award and Christmas celebration at, at Quail Valley. And it also had a great participation and again, a lot of camaraderie with each other, with their, with their families. So it's great to see our public safety people, the Police Department, coming together and celebrating, you know, as one unit. So that was really encouraging. And the other comment I have is that if you'll change the Snowdrop to 8 o'clock, I will attend next year.
Those are my comments.
We'll sign you that.
There you go. All right, well, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a Happy New Year and hope all of you, especially our staff, had the opportunity to take some time off and spend some time with their family. Hopefully, most of you did, and some of you probably worked, and we want to thank you for working hard. And I want to take this opportunity to recognize City Manager for going out and during Christmas, actual, actually on Christmas Day, to provide food for our staff who's been working on that day. So I want to take that time to thank you. I do have a few things that I want to talk about, you know, this is a new year, 2022, 2020, 2024. In 2023, we accomplished a lot as colleagues up here. Even though we may not agree every time on every, every topic, but at the end of the day, we come together and we make the best decisions for this city and moving forward. Lately, I've been noticing that there are some people that come up on public comments and they're not being truthful. And why I say this today is because of the beginning of the year. So if you believe that any of us sitting up here are not truthful, you have avenues to look at. Couple of the avenues are, you can put a public records questionnaire into City Secretary's office to see whatever it is that you want to question about. Our city's manager, our city secretary, our city attorney are always available to answer your questions because they represent the, they, they do, they not represent the citizens, we do, but they are to be available to answer any of those questions. Now, when you come up here for public comments, there's nothing wrong with providing those public comments, but just make sure that you're being truthful. And the reason I say that is, a lot of times, we cannot, sitting up in here, we cannot respond back to that individual or individuals in any comments that they make because that is the state law. So just because you want to come in here and drop whatever you didn't want to drop in three minutes and run out, I don't think it's fair to the citizens. I don't think it's fair to the city council. So I do plan on, moving forward, in my council comments, if someone comes up here and makes comments that are not truthful, to respond back to these comments to make sure that the seven of us sitting up here are making the right decisions on behalf of this city and of its citizens. With that, I end my comment. Item number 12, our closed executive sessions. The time is 7:26 p.m. And the City Council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. The time is 8:18 p.m. City Council will now close the executive session. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement discussed in the closed session related to Section 2-301 of the Missouri City Code.
And that's your motion. There's been a second by Councilmember Klausser. Councilmember Boni, did you sign us to speak? I see your name. Okay, never mind. All right, there's no one in the queue, so let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll go back to item eight for appointments, 8A, consideration and possible action to appoint members to the 2024 Charter Review Commission. Ejoys Yemo?
Yes, sir. As stated, again, we have five qualified applicants. Mr. Jeremy Davis, Mr. Mark Rubel, Mr. Keaton Anamdar, Mr. Mark Kramer, and Mr. Peter Cruishank. Those members are, or individuals are being presented to you all for consideration at this time.
Okay, thank you. I see a motion by Councilmember Boni. Can you please let us know what the motion is?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeremy Davis, Mark Rubel, Keaton Anamdar, Art Kramer for the Charter Review Commission. And then we'll make another decision on Peter Cruishank and.
So we take that one first, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Councilmember Riley, is that your second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Boni, a second by Councilmember Riley. And no one else on the queue, so let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, Councilmember Boni, you have another motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Peter Cruishank to the Charter Review Commission.
Okay, so there's been a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries six to zero.
Six to zero? Six, zero, because you abstained. Six, zero. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, with no further business, the time is 8:21. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.